I think we'll get started. Thank you so much for meeting with us tonight. We're looking forward to hearing everyone's comments. Just a few administrative details to start with. We will conclude the meeting by 10 o'clock tonight. We hope to give everyone an opportunity to speak with us and offer their comments, but the school district also requires that the building is closed by 10 o'clock. The Planning Commission of the Township of Abington is an advisory board appointed by the Board of Commissioners. The action of the Planning Commission on this agenda item does not reflect a final decision. The Board of Commissioners must render the final action on all agenda items. I will do the roll call now. Mr. D'Chello.
President.
Ms. Gautier.
Here.
Mr. Cooper.
Here.
Ms. Robinson.
Here.
Mr. Baker.
Here.
Mr. Rosen. Mr. Russell.
Here.
Mr. Baugh.
Here.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one agenda for this evening, which is BET Investment will present their proposed zoning text amendment for a proposed new use category, use H-12 senior apartment units as a conditional unit within the apartment office district. The zoning text amendment also proposes dimensional changes for the proposed new use, a list of new permitted accessory uses and other dimensional qualifiers for the proposed new use. In addition, the applicant will present their plan for how the proposed zoning text amendment will be applied to the site located at 1059, 1067, and 1073 Old York Road, Abington, Pennsylvania. And I'd like to just comment a little bit more on the reason for this meeting tonight. We've scheduled this special meeting at the request of the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Abington. So any comments put forth tonight are not a formal action on our part. To date, the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Abington have not elected to schedule the required hearings on the applicant's proposed zoning text amendment. The Board of Commissioners directed the applicant to conduct neighborhood meetings and solicit comment from the Planning Commission. In the event that revisions are made to the proposed zoning text amendment, the next formal action of the Township of Abington would be a presentation to the Board of Commissioners to determine if a hearing would be scheduled to take action on the proposed amendment. If the Board of Commissioners elect to schedule a hearing on the proposed zoning text amendment, those hearing dates and the date of any other review committees or commissions will be made public. Also, I should mention that this is the meeting for the Planning Commission. Anybody that is looking for the school board meeting, that is held in the junior high school, the building down the road adjacent to this site. So with that, again, thank you all for coming tonight, and I will turn it over to Mr. Markman to present to us the information on the proposal.
Great. Thank you very much, Chairman Strackhouse. So BET Investment stands for Bruce E. Toll. Bruce and I are partners. BET Investments currently has 70 properties in 14 states. We have about 4,000 apartments. We have about 7 million square feet of retail buildings and about 1 million square feet of office buildings. Locally, we own the Abington Shopping Center, which we remodeled and re-tenanted. We're re-tenanting as we speak. We own the Riddle Square Office Building, which is currently in Jenkins Town, and we're the contract purchaser for the YMCA and the funeral home next door. Bruce is a longtime Abington resident. He has raised his family here and maintains a home here. I've lived in Abington since 1994. Bruce and I are both former Commissioners, and I am a former Chair and member of the Planning Commission as well. So I thank you for your service to Abington. Starting with the process, I just want to quickly say where we started and what we've done so far. Initially, we met with the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners authorized us to at least move forward and start with presenting our information on the proposed project. Subsequent to that, we had a presentation to a neighbor meeting, which was well-attended. The neighbors presented 54 questions to us. We answered those 54 questions in writing, and those questions and answers were posted on the Township website. Subsequently, we've had individual meetings with certain neighbors as well, and what we requested is to come to the Planning Commission. We have gathered a lot of neighborhood input. Hopefully, we'll get some more tonight, and then hopefully get Planning Commission input as well, and look at the plan and see what modifications we can make that will comply with some of the comments that are made. Looking at our presentation, we're going to quickly start out with the project description, which I'm going to give. We have a zoning overview, which is given by our planner, a traffic study, which is going to be discussed by our traffic engineer, Township Services and Economic Impact, which I'm going to present, site planning and stormwater, which is our engineer as well, architecture, which is going to be presented by our architect, and then summary and questions. Looking at what we're requesting here from a procedural standpoint, currently, the property is owned Community Service and R3 Residential. We are proposing to rezone the piece to AO Apartment Office District, and then we're proposing a text amendment that would allow for an increased density for 55 and older apartments. 55 and older apartments can only be occupied by people that are 55 and older and would not be occupied by any schoolchildren. The parcels are currently being used for conforming and non-conforming uses, so essentially, some of the uses do not comply with current zoning, but they're pre-existing non-conforming uses, so they're allowed. And that includes the YMCA gym, childcare, and funeral home, which are the uses. If the zoning is changed, we intend to develop the parcels for luxury one- and two-bedroom senior apartments. We'll get into the amenities later, but they include upscale gathering areas, resort-style pool, and a fitness center. The average monthly rents are expected to be in excess of $2,000. You ask why we are looking for this particular use here. We actually have Dublin Terrace in Upper Dublin, which is a 55 and older community, has 192 units. We actually have a nine-month waiting list on that property to get in. It's completely full, so we feel there's a need for this. From a population standpoint, this is the trade area within three miles of the Abington YMCA. There is currently 10,598 people that are 55 years and older and have income in excess of $75,000, which would qualify them to live here. In five miles, we have 30,000 people that are 55 and older with income of $75,000, and then 53,000 people in seven miles. The reason we're looking for the age-restricted apartments right now, if you look at the baby boomers, there's actually 10,000 people every day in this country turning 65. So there's a need for high-end luxury apartments for a segment of that population. It's our opinion that that's not currently provided for in Abington Township, and generally our feeling is that we'll have residents of Abington living here and people who have children in Abington living here. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to John Kennedy, who's our planner, who's going to talk about some of the planning reasons that this application is being made.
Thank you, Michael. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Kennedy. I'm the Principal of Kennedy Associates Planners and Land Use Consultants located in Harleysville. We've been retained to work with BET to evaluate the site from a zoning standpoint and give zoning recommendations. The site, as I'm sure all of you here tonight are well aware of, is the location of the YMCA primarily, and then additionally, the funeral home next door. So this is the YMCA site. You can see right here, and then a little further down, Old York Road is the funeral home. This site is really located in the heart of the township, in one of the most active areas of the township. It's at the corner of Old York Road, which we see right here, and Susquehanna Road. And in terms of its context, as I mentioned, it really is at the heart of the township. There's a lot of different land uses and activities which take place around this site. We have the, in terms of the surrounding land uses, we have the Presbyterian Church across the street. We have the library. We have the, there's a doctor's office, pediatrician's, I believe, down here, just next to the site. We have a bank on the opposite corner, and then we have a smaller group of stores and services, which are going up Old York Road. And then just off of the photograph here, we have Abington Hospital. So there really is a lot of activities and different uses in terms of the immediate proximity of the site. To the e, oops, there we go. To the east, adjacent to the site, we have a residential neighborhood. This is an R3 neighborhood, and then some open space up here, just above Susquehanna Road. In terms of surrounding zoning, let me see if I can, oops, there we go. We see the site here outlined in blue, and again, for reference, this is Old York Road. This is Susquehanna Road. Immediately to the north, across the street, we have AO, which is Apartment Office. And then across the street, kitty corner, we have MSL, which is Main Street, low intensity. It's one of the revitalization districts. Directly across the street, we have CS, which is Community Service. That would be primarily the church and the library. Just below the site, we also have CS. You can see on this map also the fact that the site is split zone. The front part is zone CS, the back part is zone R3. And as we continue around the property to the east, we have an R3 neighborhood right here, and then just diagonally across, we have an open space area. So these rings that you see on this image are, this first ring is 500 feet, second one is 1,000 feet, which is, again, an easy walking distance, and then this is 2,000 feet. So just within a very easy walking distance, there is a lot of various land uses and businesses which could be accessed by anybody who would be living on this site. One of the things that I would like to explain next, what we're proposing in the text amendment is actually creating a new use. The use would be available in the AO district. It would be H-12. It would be senior apartment unit. We feel that this is one of the best ways in terms of blending in with your zoning ordinance to introduce a zoning, a dwelling type such as this. However, obviously, you do need to have adequate controls so that it is not allowed everywhere in the township. And so there's a series of criteria in the ordinance that are required for a property to qualify for this. First and foremost, the first requirement is that there must be a hospital within 2,000 feet, and this is really critical for senior housing. Not only is it the hospital itself, but typically clustered around hospitals, you do find medical offices, doctor's offices. You might find pharmacies and other types of support businesses. So it really makes a lot of sense from a planning standpoint to locate higher-density senior housing around and adjacent to hospitals. We are saying 2,000 feet. What you see here is a copy of the Township zoning map, and there would be two, what I'll call, large areas which could qualify for this type of land use, just from this one criteria. This is Abington Hospital right here, and then we also have Holy Redeemer Hospital. And I would also point out for members of the audience that a hospital is a very tightly-defined land use in Abington Township. You can't say an urgent care is going to qualify. It's simply not going to. You have a very, very tight definition of what a hospital is. The next criteria in the ordinance is that there must be frontage on two roads. In our case, we have frontage on Old York Road, and we also have frontage on Susquehanna. And then the final criteria would be there must be access to public transportation within 400 feet. Again, this is so that you can provide these services to senior citizens. Also, you're trying to encourage pedestrian traffic and use of walking from the site. So the fact that you've got hospitals and related medical uses within close proximity and public transportation, those really are some appropriate controls to limit where this could occur. And then, of course, the other criteria would be, the site would have to be zoned AO. So not every property within these radius of the hospitals could qualify. Only any property which is zoned AO. There are other criteria in the ordinance. I'm not going to go through it line by line. If any of you have questions, I'm more than happy to answer that, but there are more standard criteria, such as minimum site area, minimum lot width, and so on. And just to kind of wrap up from a zoning and planning standpoint, I think that this proposed use has a lot of advantages for the community. It's a fact that the YMCA is going to move out. They already have started their new facility. So this is a notable centrally-located site, and one which really should be put to a good use, something that can take advantage of its location, and I think senior housing is an appropriate use. Also, as stated in your comprehensive plan, there is a desire and a goal to provide for a variety of housing types and demographics. So as Michael mentioned, we have a lot of aging citizens every day. The number is increasing, myself included in that. So as time goes by, the demand is only going to increase for this type of housing. And I think it's also important to note that this is a little bit different variety of senior housing than what you might be familiar with some types, which would be independent living or some of the other variations, where basically somebody sells their house, they completely cash out, and they go and they spend a lot of money investing in a senior facility. This allows much more flexibility, since it is basically an apartment. Seniors can preserve their cash and their capital. They have a lot of flexibility. They can go and travel. They have independence, similar to independent living, and they also have a lot of neighbors in close proximity that can keep an eye on each other. So I think in that sense, there are some real advantages. Some other advantages are the fact that, obviously, for an AO development or an apartment development, this would not create or generate any school-aged children. We will show you some fiscal information in a minute, but the other obvious advantage is that there is a very large positive financial impact for the township and especially for the school district, because the taxes are generated, but there are no school-aged children generated from these particular types of projects. So that is a, that's a real advantage, I believe, from a planning standpoint. And just finally, the other thing, in preparing to work on this project, we did go through and examine the 2007 Conference of Plan, and we took a look at the Old York Corridor studies, and I think that one important aspect of this is the fact that you can actually start to revitalize and reinvigorate parts of Old York Road. As many of you are aware of, commercial development is somewhat on the decline because of the way that we change our shopping habits these days. And so the commercial stores that you do have really do need to have a lot of population and households around them to support them and keep them up and running. And I think this is a great way to reinvigorate kind of the central core part of Abington and also encourage walkability, encourage use of public transportation, and hopefully start to really revitalize the central part of the township here. I think next, we're going to go on to some traffic information, because we all know that that is a major concern, and so Sandy Coza is going to go through the traffic information.
Good evening. I'm Sandy Coza. I work with McMahon Associates. We're located in Port Washington, and I've been a project manager there for almost 20-some, 20 years now, and I mainly focus on traffic impact studies, as well as municipal reviews and other private development projects. We were hired to do the traffic impact study for this site. So one of the things that we do is we start looking at where the site is located, and one of the things to note is that it is along Old York Road, and there are a number of SEPTA stops along and adjacent to the site, so that is an advantage for this site. The other thing is there is a sidewalk system currently provided along Old York Road, and as part of the redevelopment, the sidewalk will be extended along Susquehanna Road as well, along the site frontage. So there are going to be opportunities for walking and for transit access to this area. And then we looked at the study area intersections, Susquehanna and Old York Road, Susquehanna and Adams Avenue down here. We counted the actual existing YMCA driveways, just so we could get an idea of how much traffic that is currently generating, so that then we could do a comparison of what we're expecting to be generated from the site when it's redeveloped. Then we looked at the Sunrise Apartment Complex up here, because that is going to be, there's going to be a driveway located across from there. And then we also looked at Huntington Avenue here, as well, along Susquehanna Road. And when we do our traffic counts, we do them in the morning commuter peak from 7:00 to 9:00, and in the afternoon commuter peak from 4:00 to 9:00. And our counters basically pick up everything at these intersections. They look at the individual movements during each of the little peaks that we have here. They look at heavy vehicles on each of the turn movements, and we also look at how many pedestrians are crossing on each of these intersections. So that was also accounted for in our study as well. Just as a comparison, Old York Road, which is 611, that actually carries anywhere from 26,000 to 28,000 vehicles per day on a daily basis, while Susquehanna carries around 14,000 to 16,000, up to 17,000 vehicles per day. So I just want to put this in perspective in terms of what these roads are currently generating versus what we're going to be seeing in our study. So this is just a summary figure that we have in our report that shows the peak hour volumes. Unfortunately, it's not going to show up very well here, but what we do is we take all these volumes and we enter them into an analysis program, and we start to look at levels of service. And basically what those are, those are grades kind of similar to what you would get on a report card. They're from A, B, C, D, E, and F. The As and Bs are usually lower delays, whereas anything like a level of service F is something that...
Excuse me for a moment. Could you possibly try to speak a little closer to the mic so that the echo is reduced? I don't know if that'll have the effect we want, but that's what I want to see.
Okay, we can, is it gone?
Better.
Better. All right. Sorry about that. So as I was saying, when we're looking at our impacts to the intersections, we're actually assigning them grade levels from A through F, similar to what you get on a report card, where the As and Bs are obviously your better grades, and your Es and Fs are the failing grades. So we did take a look at the existing conditions. In terms of the overall operations at these intersections, they were shown to be operating at level of service D, which PennDOT considers to be an acceptable level of service. And then what we did was we did a trip generation comparison, and that's kind of what this table here shows. So what we're looking at is the proposed characteristics for the 225 units for the senior age-restricted apartments. Those would generate between 45 to 56 new trips on each of the peak hours, the AM and the PM. And then we compared them to the actual driveway counts that we counted at those three driveways for the YMCA. So the YMCA currently generates 231 and 224 trips. So when we look at that, the actual site is going to be reduced in terms of the impacts on the roadway networks. We're actually reducing anywhere from 168 down to 186 trips during those two peak hours. And just as a comparison, right around the time when we were doing our report, ITE, they produce, they're the Institute of Transportation Engineers. They produce a report that looks at trip generation characteristics for various developments. And they had produced the ninth edition back in 2012. Well, right around the time when we were producing our report, they came out with the 10th edition. So we did look at how that would change the values in our report. In terms of the peak hours, those are the same. The only difference you'll notice is that the 10th edition is saying that there's going to be 100 more trips on a daily basis. So that was really the only difference, and we kind of wanted to provide that so that everyone is aware of that. So then what we do with our future conditions is, because we had all that traffic from the existing YMCA, that was first removed from the network, and then we took a look at where the new driveways were for the site, and we then redistributed that traffic to the network. And we're basically looking at similar and somewhat improved conditions compared to the existing, and that's mainly because during our critical morning and afternoon peak hours, we are reducing the trip generation for the site. So I think that's it for the traffic overview.
So I'm going to take on the fiscal impact analysis. The person who did the study wasn't available tonight, but I've been through enough of these where I can kind of speak intelligently about them. Essentially, what this does is it looks at the taxes that would be generated by the project. As it stands today, the YMCA does not generate any taxes. It's a nonprofit organization, so there's no taxes paid to the township or the school district. Essentially, it looks at the average assessed value, the persons per unit, the township's services that will be used by those people. There's slightly less for an age-restricted apartment community than a regular community due to the fact that, and I can provide the studies to you, that Del Webb has done through thousands of senior communities, they generally use less township services. Now, the one township service they actually use a lot more are ambulances. There are more ambulance calls to an age-restricted community. And I actually called second alarmers today just to make sure that there's no impact on the township related to ambulances. And essentially, what they do is the insurance covers it, and with the $2,000 or $2,500 rents that will be charged here, the insurance will cover any kind of ambulance services. So essentially, with the net impact to the township, which isn't as great as the schools, it would produce $125,000 in revenues to the township, and that's the net impact after you take services. It's really private garbage. There's very little township services that would be provided to this community, so it'll provide $125,000 in township revenue. Going to the school, this is where it actually works out really well, and I can tell you that we've done six or seven of these communities. I can tell you right now, I have never voluntarily offered an age restriction in any of these communities. I live in Abington. I care about the schools. I care about the tax structure. So we started this process not saying we're going to do market-rate apartments, saying we're going to do age-restricted apartments. Number one, I know I have neighbors and friends who would want to live in this type of community, and number two, I want to help the schools out. I don't want there to be schoolchildren in this. So we voluntarily said it will be, in fact, an age-restricted community, which would have less impact than a market-rate apartment community. When you take into account the value of the units, the assessment, this project will provide $723,000 per year to Abington School District, $723,000 a year. To look at that, that's actually between 20% and 25% of all the school taxes paid by the Willow Grove Mall. So as a Commissioner, I was always concerned about the fact that potentially the Willow Grove Mall could go down in value. I'm currently working on tearing down a mall, the Granite Run Mall, and this would actually make up for 20% loss in value to the Willow Grove Mall. And as far as the new high school remodel, which is about $100 million project, this would cover between $20 and $25 million in debt service on that project, so it would cover a large portion of that. So essentially, more so for the school board, it's a windfall. There's absolutely no students. Students aren't permitted, and no children are permitted in this community, and it would provide $723,000 in revenues to the schools. And it would provide $723,000 in revenues to the schools. And what that can do is hold down the residential, the taxes to the residences. And this is all paid by us, it's part of the rent. This just gives a general summary of the impact for the 225 units. So it's $125,000 approximately to the township, $723,000 to the schools. So the annual tax bill for this project would be approximately $848,000 to the schools and to the township. With that, I want to introduce Peter Cleland, who's going to go over some other issues
Thank you, Michael. Peter Cleland with BET Investments. I'm a professional engineer and working with outside professional engineers on this project. But internally, anytime that we venture into a project like this, we of course look at what we're proposing and how we may implement that on the site. So, the image on the screen at this point is a very conceptual layout for the property. As John had previously mentioned, we're bordered on the west by Old York Road, on the north by Susquehanna Road. And in this image, you can see, in the purple, is the outline of what would be a four-story building housing the apartment units over top of what is then labeled in kind of the shadow line as the parking deck below the building. So there would be one level of parking, some of which is at grade and some of which is in fact below grade relative to the surrounding streets, and then the apartment units above it. So, in areas here, we have called out for amenity deck, pool deck, and another amenity deck. And as part of this process, one of the main things that, again, like traffic and fiscal impacts, people are largely concerned about is stormwater. This came up in the prior meetings, not only with commissioners, but with the neighborhood groups. And there was concern about the water in Meadow Brook along Valley, excuse me, the fairway. And we've studied this a little bit further since those meetings. And this site, in fact, today, there is no stormwater control on the site today. It runs off completely uncontrolled and in fact drains from the back of the property through a series of pipes around the YMCA building out to York Road, which we have determined ultimately drains to Tucany Creek, not to Meadow Brook. As we go further through the development, we've obviously not fully designed the stormwater at this point in time, but we anticipate, I'm going to jump back a little bit, that we're going to control stormwater on this site through a series of newer style BMPs, both underground detention as well as rooftop control, including green roofs and other adaptive reuse of water on the site. This is an image of an underground detention basin that we've recently constructed in another project using what is termed in the industry sort of a crate system. This is placed, can be placed underneath parking lots, underneath buildings. And the water enters the system through the piping network on the site, through a series of inlets. It is stored in this area underneath the ground and is allowed to slowly percolate either into the ground or a release, slow release runoff into the storm, back into the storm sewer system at a slower rate than what exists today. From a green roof technology standpoint, I'm sure a lot of people have heard about these. We are doing them more and more as projects go forward. This is an opportunity for you to cleanse the lower intensity storms on the roof. In this image, you see a tray system where these plants are placed on the roof in anywhere from a two inch to eight inch deep tray, which contains a number of different medias to both hold the stormwater and allow it to be absorbed and respirated by the plants. Here's an installation picture of the green roof system. This one, in fact, actually has an irrigation system designed into it for those times when you don't have enough stormwater to sustain the plants. And this is an instance where you could use stormwater that you collect on upper roofs of the building in cisterns to then water those plants and continue to use them. With that, I'm turning it over to Matt to discuss architecture.
Good evening. My name's Matt Johnson. I'm a licensed architect and I've specialized in mixed-use and multifamily projects. I'm BET's in-house architect. That doesn't mean that we created the design in-house. We hire local firms to create the design and document the project. We just kind of guide the process. So I'm going to talk about what some of our, some of our goals were with this preliminary This first view is showing the entrance along Susquehanna Road. What you see in the facade is we're trying to break down what could be a long and monolithic facade. We're trying to break it down with the ins and outs and the variety of step backs. We also have some traditional elements where we create a base, a middle, and a top to the elevation. The materials that we're proposing to use are all high-quality materials. BET holds and manages its properties, which makes BET responsible for the long-term maintenance of all its projects. So the materials we propose really need to stand the test of time. Really need to hold up for the long term. The materials we're showing here are brick, stone, and some manufactured stone. And we'll kind of talk more about the materials in the next couple slides. What we're also showing in this image is the streetscape. Given the 20-foot setback from the street, that gives, that allows an opportunity to create landscaping right up against the street with some street trees. And then you have about a six-foot sidewalk and then additional landscaping along the This is the view along Old York Road. Again, you see the varying stepping of the facade, the ins and the outs, the same high-quality materials of the brick and the stone, the pleasant streetscape design. On the left-hand side, you also see the cemetery that's at the corner of York and Susquehanna. Lining the cemetery is an existing row of taller trees. These trees, of course, would remain and sort of provide a buffer between the cemetery and our project. BET would also be willing to help with maintenance of the cemetery. I know that was an issue that arose in one of the prior meetings. And would also be willing to provide some upgrades perhaps to the sidewalks surrounding the cemetery as well. This slide shows the view along Susquehanna Road. Again, it kind of highlights the materials that I mentioned where we're using brick, stone, and hardy panel. Again, you see the stepping in the facade. You see that the top level actually steps back from the street. And then on the left-hand side, on the left-hand side, as we get closer to the neighbors, you actually see that we step down in height. This lowest portion here on the left side is about 10 feet tall, and it's about 60 feet wide. Further to the left here, we have about a 40-foot setback to the neighbor's property line. So by the time we get to this taller portion of the facade, that's two or three or four stories tall, we're really about 100 feet from the neighbors. This single-level portion is just covered parking and with the amenity deck above that Pete had highlighted earlier. This is a section through Susquehanna Road. Again, it kind of shows what I was talking about earlier, where the top level steps back from the road. You can see we're about 55 feet here compared to Sunrise across the street, which is about 45 feet tall. Given the nature of our site, the majority of our site is actually about seven feet lower than the grade along the street. So a lot of our parking is actually going to be partially submerged, where the residents would come in and go down a ramp about seven feet to the parking level. This slide also highlights the streetscape elements, where we have about a 20-foot setback in which we'd have about eight feet of landscaping along the building, a six-foot sidewalk, and then a six-foot landscape buffer between the street with street trees. This would be Susquehanna Road in the center. And then across the street, a little further up the road, you'll see that we actually have a similar setback to the bank, the Wells Fargo Bank, where they're about 20 feet off the street with a similar breakdown of about a six-foot buffer, a six-foot sidewalk, eight feet of landscaping next to the building. This is a section that cuts through the portion of the slide I showed, or the portion of the building I showed two slides ago, where you have the smaller portion in the building that's only about 10 feet tall. This is, this portion of the building is setback 40 feet from the property line right here. This portion of the building is 60 feet wide and which, which allows for about 100 feet before the property line, before we really start creating a taller building. You also see, as we get closer to the neighbors, we're stepping, we're stepping the building back, which also creates terraces for the residents. These next two slides are just ideas for what the amenity deck could be. These types of communities tend to have a pool deck. You create gathering areas with grills and fire pits. So that's what's shown in this slide here. And again, here is just another view of the amenity deck. Really, these are just, it just creates a resort-style atmosphere that's become typical of these newer multifamily and senior living projects.
So one thing I wanted to go through is interior amenities. And one thing we learned at Dublin Terrace with these senior housing communities, you actually, the seniors, unlike with your market rate communities, they use the common spaces. So what we've learned at Dublin Terrace is we have about a 2,500-square-foot common area, which is not enough. Here, we would propose 7,500 to 10,000 square feet. The comment they make at Dublin Terrace is they feel like they're living in a luxury hotel. And we feel that that's what we want to impart here. And that's becoming very, very normalized for, you know, the upscale apartment communities. So you feel like you live in a luxury hotel with lush common areas. You know, you hire decorators, you spend a fair amount on that. And basically, when people walk in, they have a good feel to it, and then they can go to their rooms, and then they can come down and they can meet people. What we also have is we have exercise classes. And we found that, you know, it's been, we get, sometimes we get 40 to 50 people at our exercise classes at Dublin Terrace. The mistake there is we don't have enough exercise space. So as far as that 7,500 to 10,000 square feet, we'll have a large group fitness room. And we find that group fitness is probably more important than the exercise equipment because it's social, and people really enjoy the social, and it creates mobility for a lot of the people. Our average age at Dublin Terrace is 75. And we feel that, you know, we give a lot of activities that allow people to feel like they can have very vibrant and satisfying lives. And we think the environment actually promotes that. This is just our clubhouse at Dublin Terrace. It shows we have probably events every other week that are very well-attended. This looks like it was probably for St. Patrick's Day. And generally, we provide food and, you know, there's a, it's a vibrant social life. Another event we had at the clubhouse as well. You know, the one thing we do, we provide excellent fitness instructors. No. My wife is actually a fitness instructor here, so I actually have a insight as to what the fitness classes, you know, can do. And I think what they do is they allow the residents to be social, they allow the residents to interact with each other, and they help make a cohesive community. And that's what we have at Dublin Terrace, and that's what we hope to do here. As far as the residents at Dublin Terrace, 70, I would say 50%, the number is 50% of all the residents that currently live there are either from Upper Dublin or have children in Upper Dublin. Our goal here is to create a luxury resort-style environment for Abington residents that are generally 70 to 75 years old, they can be as young as 55, to go and have a place to live in the township, so they don't have to move to Upper Dublin. My in-laws just moved out of their house, and they moved into the plaza, which is a very nice building. It just doesn't offer the types of amenity spaces and the type of living that we could provide here. And that's really what our goal is. We live here, we have friends here, we know that this type of environment doesn't currently exist, and that's what we want to provide at what we're calling Abington Terrace. And this just shows some more exercise classes that are obviously well-attended. And really, that's, that's our presentation. The other thing I just want to add is, you know, we're well-aware of the York and Susquehanna issues. As part of any zoning approval process, we'd be willing to make a contribution to help with the intersection, because we know that there's plans in place to improve the intersection and help the township with that. As far as the sidewalk, it's in, the sidewalk around the cemetery right now is in extremely dangerous condition. The curb is almost sunken in, so if a car actually, you know, veers off, they could hit a pedestrian walking on that sidewalk. What we would do in that case is we would actually replace the whole sidewalk around the cemetery. We'd be willing to work with the group that takes care of the cemetery to work on the fence as well. Now, I think the fence is historical, so it wouldn't be necessarily something that we could touch. But we would also be willing to help contribute to the upkeep of the cemetery. When I went by there, I think it was yesterday, there's gravestones that are knocked over and other things. So, we feel coming in, we're already a part of the community. If we have this property, we'll continue to be part of the community and we'll help with the upkeep of the historic cemetery that exists there right now. So that's basically our presentation. We feel we've hit, you know, the majority of issues that have been raised. And we're open to questions from the planning commission and obviously any questions from the community.
Great. Thank you very much. With that, I'd like to welcome the public for comments in a few minutes, but I would like to acknowledge the fact that we have received several letters from the public. One particularly was an eight-page letter, very well-thought-out letter with references to all of our zoning ordinances and our plans. And we thank you very much for that. They will be put into the official record for tonight. We also received other letters from individuals, and we thank you for those too. I had a request from someone who wanted to speak first because they have pressing matters at home. If you're still here and you'd like to come up, that's fine. There you are, thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to say hello to some of my former friends on Planning Commission. I haven't been here for 10 years. My name is Carol Covert. I live at Riddle Park in the Parkside Building, have for three years. Before that, I lived in Riddle on Ferriger's Road. I served on the Planning Commission from 1990 until I retired in 2008. I enjoyed hearing the presentation tonight, listened very carefully. And some of the information that I was working under, of course, has changed. I understand that there is a new zoning ordinance in, that was done in 2017. Could I ask, when was the previous comprehensive plan finished?
2007.
2007?
2007? Okay. I helped write that one. Okay. The concerns that I know have been expressed are the stormwater runoff. I also have concerns about that. I heard the presentation about piping it onto Old York Road and it going down to Tucany. I can tell you from a fact that I can see outside my balcony every time it rains that we really do have extreme stormwater conditions at Riddle Park. And I am concerned that the, that the whole project could exacerbate that. Some of the piping goes that way, some of the water I'm sure does not. So I think the concern is really very, very valid. Second, on traffic, I did listen to the traffic study. Yes, the YMCA probably does have some items, but I also am concerned about the increase in traffic with a bunch of new apartments. One of my, my concerns for the future- One of my, my concerns for the future has to do rather long-term. We have several communities dedicated to seniors. Obviously, Riddle Park, Riddle Waters is coming on very soon, we've got Sunrise. I would like to just express my concern down the road. If there is too much capacity, we'll have a glut, and the various entities could be struggling and maybe cannibalizing one another. And then my question is, what might happen to the existing communities? It just, as I understand it, it just says A.O. So just because a property has a senior designation now, my question is, will it have a senior designation 25, 30 years ago, or in the future? Could that change? Could we have a problem? I also feel that sometimes if one of the communities went bankrupt, what would happen? Could that open it up to something like low-income housing? And I think that is a concern that we all need to think about very, very long-term. I'm also interested in what uses are permitted in the current zoning. And I would like to consider maybe that input from our comprehensive plan last time indicated that a lot of our citizens are very, very interested in maintaining the ambience of our community, which is a green-country town. They were very, very vocal about not wanting to live in a city. And with the, the plans for the buildings, it seems like we could possibly get some concrete canyons. The 20-foot setback is really not very, very far, and usually, a lot of our zoning has traditionally required that buildings be in the center of the property. These seem to be along the edge with, you know, other amenities in the center, and I question whether that is good for the entire community. I see that, obviously, the project would like it, and it would benefit them. I question whether it would benefit all the citizens. I was playing with the idea of what are the permitted uses, and I was rather interested that maybe something like a daycare center. I know when, when I was on Planning Commission, Abington Hospital opened their own daycare center. There was a lot of comment from the neighbors and the community saying, "Ooh, we could use that." And the answer was, "Well, unfortunately, all of our employees have taken the spots, and we have a waiting list for our employees." So it seems like there would be a real need for something like daycare. The daycare would not increase cars, because a lot of the employees in Abington and some of the shopping centers and places like that, they're already going through to go to work, so maybe it's just a go-in, drop-off, and at night, pick-up. So I don't see that that would increase traffic, and I think it's a possibility, is a brainstorm, to look into. I was also wondering about something like a private school or a fitness center. My last concern has to do with historic preservation. The YMCA building actually is a very attractive building, and most of our citizens have always said that they really like the fact that this is an older community with all kinds of interesting buildings. And I think that looking into maintaining and preserving that building and reusing it in some way might be a very interesting concept. I'm also concerned about the cemetery and redoing the Susquehanna Road at Old York Road intersection. The cemetery has a war monument, and everybody kind of likes that, and what would happen to that? It seems like it's at a particular place, and I would like everyone to consider things like that. Thank you very much for listening. It's nice to see all of you, and I wish you well.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to come up?
Sir, if you would, prior to speaking, just give your name and address to the record, please.
I will. Good evening. My name is Bruce Murray, 1035 Highland Avenue in Abington. So my wife and I live on Highland Avenue, about three blocks away from the site. I fully expect, as I sit here tonight, that I'm going to hear a lot of concerns about this facility, as have already been expressed in previous meetings and just a moment ago. I'd like to go on the record as saying that I'm excited about the facility as I've seen it. I hope it gets built exactly as it's been described. We've lived here for 35 years. Our three boys went through the school district. My wife and I love Abington. We look forward to staying here if we can. We have friends in Dublin Terrace who love it and do have some concerns about some of the amenities being too small. I think that this facility looks to me as though it will enhance the drive up York Road. I worry a great deal about what people think when they drive through the main corridors of our township. As I say, we've been here 35 years, and I worry about the future of our township. Old York Road above Edge Hill is looking dilapidated, as I know you're all well-aware. Eastern Road has improved in some places, but is not great, and we're seeing more and more of our residential communities with single houses on a pretty block become dilapidated. There was an article in the Inquirer this week in the real estate section about just this kind of facility being constructed in other communities in the area, in the suburbs. And I'm concerned that we're going to get left behind, because people my age and a lot of the folks in the room tonight are going to be looking for places to stay. I suspect that many of the people here would like to stay in the community. This looks like something my wife and I would enjoy living in in the next few years. I'd rather stay in Abington. We have family in Meadowbrook, and I'd like to stay here and continue to be a part of this community. And in sum, after hearing the updated information from BET that we saw on the screen tonight, I see absolutely no rational reason not to let them move ahead with this project. I think it's aesthetically attractive. I think it's going to be an improvement to the community, and, you know, I was an executive at a pharmaceutical company and faced planning commissions and groups like we have here tonight many times. Traffic is always one of the things that comes up. The folks at BET just told us that we're going to have less traffic than we have out of the YMCA. I don't understand why people can't seem to understand that point. Less, not more. I think it's a terrific development. I hope the Planning Board and the Commission approve it and that it gets built as it's proposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gordon Lawrence. I was a Cheltenham Township Commissioner for 20 years. Therefore, like you, I have sat through countless projected projects from various developers, both some good and some not-so-good. I currently reside at Riddle Park. Our residents have circulated a petition, excuse me, opposing this development with approximately 300 names on it. And there is a reason, or there are several reasons. I'm not going to get into the water runoff, because that is going to be explained, I think, by somebody else, but it's an extremely serious consideration. Let me just talk for a second about traffic. I am amazed always at the presentations that developers bring to their traffic consultants, because everything's always going to be better. Right now, at rush hour, the backup on Susquehanna for people trying to get under the railroad bridge is considerable. My understanding is that there also might be another 200 units and a new apartment built right behind Planet Fitness on the fairway. That would be added to these 200 units on Susquehanna, and I would suggest that if that happens at evening rush hour, the traffic down Susquehanna trying to get under that railroad bridge is going to back really, basically, all the way up to York Road. It's going to be a mess. I'm not going to spend any more time here, other than to say that the majority, the large majority of the residents at Riddle Park are vehemently opposed to this, and if I may take a pun, we think this will have a very adverse toll on Riddle Park.
Hello. My name is Dr. Van Hellersley. I live in the property behind the YMCA. My address is 1047 Huntington Road. I thank you for the opportunity to comment on this proposal. As was mentioned earlier, an extensive letter was written by the immediate neighbors in opposition to this proposal, and I was one of the main authors of that document. And I'd like to highlight a few points from this letter for the benefit of our community members. The state law requires municipalities to establish a comprehensive plan that guides the growth, preservation, and physical development of an identified geographical area. And the Abington Township has such a plan, and that comprehensive plan was last, was last updated in 2007. So in order to ensure that these plans are executed, we have, we have zoning ordinances. And our zoning ordinance was last updated in 2017. Unfortunately, the BET resolution conflicts on many levels with the goals and objectives recommended, as recommended by this comprehensive plan. And I want to just point out a few of those things. The comprehensive plan seeks to protect cultural, historic, scenic, and other important features, including structures and landscapes, which have a special character or use. However, this BET proposal would demolish a 100-plus-year-old community service building of some historical significance, tower over historically significant Abington Presbyterian Church, while at the same time render virtually insignificant a historic, scenic, and sacred cemetery. The comprehensive plan also states that any expansion of homes in residential neighborhoods, that they should blend harmoniously with the surrounding building environment. In addition, our planners had aimed to construct any similar housing types to keep with the character of the neighborhoods. And as you can see, the BET proposal that you have seen, that, that construction is modernistic, five-plus stories, high-density apartment complex, something that belongs to a center city. It will destroy the character of our community, and it will clash stylistically with its surroundings. And so I would ask for a serious reconsideration of this proposal. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Amanda Dentweiler, 1055 Huntington Road, also behind the Y property. I'm going to go off-script a little bit. My neighbors asked that I speak a little bit about the tax amendment, because we didn't feel like it was covered enough, in enough detail for the audience who might be hearing it for the first time. The tax amendment changes the density of, with the new use case for H12, from 16 density units to 50 density units. So that's a 213% increase in density units. In comparison, the Old York Road study that Van and others have mentioned calls for a range of 15 to 25 density units. In fact, the Old York Road study points out that in Cheltenham, the Lamont neighborhood has the highest density units, which is at 19.3. You could also compare this to the E10 usage, as the Montgomery County Planning Commission did, which has a density units of 24, which, again, this increase of 50 is a 110% increase. So other impacts of the tax amendment is that the building height goes from 40 feet to 65 feet. So on Huntington Road, the bottom of our street is at an elevation of about 309 feet, and there's a natural, you know, you're going uphill towards Susquehanna and Old York, so that's at about 334 feet, and then this is another 65 feet. So we haven't seen any renderings of what it's going to look like from our street, but it's going to be about 90 feet. You know, when you add those numbers together, it's about 90 feet above our homes. The other impacts of the tax amendment is the building lot size increases from 25% to 75%. The impervious space goes from 60% to 80%, and the reduction of green space is, goes, decreases from 40% to 20%. So with the 2017 zoning ordinance just in effect, we ask you to consider the Montgomery County Planning Commissioners, Planning Committee, who said that these types of increases, especially in density, should only be considered along with an impact study, a new comprehensive plan. And since we just put the zoning ordinance in place, I don't know if we're ready as a township to take on that type of planning again. So as a neighborhood, we are concerned and reject specifically the tax amendments in their current form. Thanks.
Hello. My name is Herb McMahon. I'm from 1046 Huntington Road, and I was wondering if we can pull up the aerial site slide on here. It was one of the first couple of slides that would help me talk about the traffic impact. And can I borrow somebody's laser pointer? Does anybody have a laser pointer I could borrow? The aerial site. Okay, so from the neighbors' meeting, basically, I agreed to talk about traffic and safety. So that's where my primary focus is. But I also want to just say that the eight-page letter that you got from the neighbors, I am fully behind that letter. I can't, I can't tell you how much I'm vehemently opposed to this project. But I wanted to augment the traffic study that Sandy from McMahon presented. I believe it was done in the couple of days leading up to the July 4th weekend, which means there was no school in session, and if anybody went away for a long weekend or went on vacation that week, those numbers would be falsely low. The other thing I wanted to point out was the crashes that have occurred and also the red light camera violations. So this is where the red light cameras are right now, Old York and Susquehanna. Basically, I went back over two years, and there was basically 6,618 violations at that one intersection over two years. The, the interesting thing I also saw was that back in 2016, the average number of violations were, was anywhere from about 400 to a little over 500. And if you look at the data from 2017, you see that the range ranges from about 770 to 795, which is almost a double increase for that one intersection. And that is just over one period of time. And I think that speaks to the volume of traffic that's going on there, and also to the safety that's And that is just over one period of time. And I think that speaks to the volume of traffic that's going on there and also to the safety that's going on there. Speaking to the safety, one of the things I looked at was number of crashes. And I looked at four intersections that are mostly surrounding this facility, and the people would have to use if they exited the site. Basically, I identified 75 crashes over two years. 38 occurred right here, Old York Road and Susquehanna. So that's roughly more than half of all the crashes. And you can see what the proximity is to this site. 11 crashes happened right here at Riddle Way and 611. We had, we had 11 crashes right up here at Huntington Road and Susquehanna. And the other site I looked at was Susquehanna and Valley Road, which would be off the map here. But if people exited this site, there's a no left turn, so they're forced to make a right. So our community's marked no through traffic. So if they honored that, they'd have to come down Susquehanna and go to Valley Road, make a right on Valley Road, and then back out to 611. And at that fairway, there was 15 crashes. The other thing I'd like to point out with the traffic study was that it did nothing to say what the impact to this community is here. Huntington Road has houses all along through here, and I believe that most people that exit here are forced to make a right turn. And I believe the simplest way of handling this is to make a right on the Huntington Road, which basically only can handle one direction. Two cars can't pass safely. So basically, what happens is if you're coming down Huntington Road, somebody's going up Huntington Road, one car slows down and pulls all the way over so that it can accommodate the traffic. But I do believe that people will be coming down out of this site to come out to Riddle Way and then up or down 611. The other thing I wanted to point out was at this site, there's an exit. And basically, you can only make a right-hand turn and go north. And that would take you through 611. If you wanted to go south, you either go up 611 and somehow either make a right and come back down and around, or you use some other roads and make your southerly path. So those areas have not been studied either, the impact of any of these side streets. So that basically concludes my traffic concerns. So I would like to say that I don't think the threshold has been met to change the AO, I'm sorry, the community service NR3 that currently exist in this site. And the tax amendment with the changes that were outlined by my neighbor are just so dense that they defy any kind of logic. And to think that there's not going to be an impact on traffic like the man from Riddle Park said is just insane. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If we could just take a moment here to respond to a couple of these as we're going along, relative to some misinformation that's being repeated. The stormwater does not go down Susquehanna towards Riddle Park. As we outlined on our earlier slide, we've studied the drainage patterns on the site further. And the stormwater is all piped out to Old York Road today. It will continue to be piped out to Old York Road because we will have to maintain the existing drainage patterns of the property. There may be a small section here at the back of the property on the hillside that does drain down there today, and that will continue to. But that's part of our green space, and we will not be, we will not be increasing runoff off of the site. One other thing on the slide that Herb was just referring to, we are not restricting left turns out of the proposed facility to Susquehanna Road. Going the wrong way. There are two driveways to Susquehanna Road. We are going to restrict left turns out from the driveway that is closest to the intersection with York Road. The driveway, however, that will come out here opposite Susquehanna, you will be permitted to make left turns out of. And the other thing to take into consideration is that this entire parking structure all connects internally. So if you need to go to York Road to go north, you're not going, you're going to come through the garage and make a right turn on York Road. Sandy, while we're at it, what was the date of your study?
The date is June 21st. It is where it's accounted by the summer.
Okay. And then this is a sidebar, the density that's proposed here is actually very similar to the Abingdon-Penn State structure that was just built down the street. He is correct. The traffic counts weren't taken during the summer.
July 4th.
It was a July 4th.
The weekend, a couple of days leading up.
At the end of June.
July 4th.
Prior to the Fourth of July weekend.
My name is Bill Swartzchild, and I do live at Riddle Park. And I've done a little research and also to comment what the gentleman just said. To the best of my knowledge, water runs downhill. It's very hard to get it to run uphill. York and Susquehanna Roads is 341 feet. The base, the Meadowbrook stream at the fairway is 149 feet. And some of the water may be pumped, may be flowing somehow down York Road, but the back of that property is lower, and it'll all flow downhill like most water does. I have said this once before, but I don't know if you people are aware of it. One inch of rain on an acre is 27,154 gallons, and the weight of that water is 113 tons. And since we're dealing with a little over four acres, this week equals 108,616,000 gallons, or 462 tons of water. And the source for this information is the United States Weather Service, which is pretty accurate. The average rainfall in Abingdon Township for the past 10 years has been four to five inches a month, and lately, we've had more than that. So if they build on this plan, that water has to go somewhere. The university, where I got my other information, was University of Regina. And to cover this much water in a retention basin, you would need a 400 by 400-foot retention basin with a depth of about 85 feet. So if they're going to do it through rain gardens and things like that, that sounds good, but I don't think it's going to work. And most of the other stuff that I wanted to cover, I think, has already been covered, and I don't want to waste your time. But rainwater is a very serious thing. Susquehanna Road, which is all downhill, will have to be rebuilt or regraded. Drains will have to be put in there, and freezing weather, you're going to have more accidents. So that's all I have to say. But thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Shep Por. I've lived in Abingdon since 1980. I was 11-year-old, went to Riddle, was actually at Huntington Junior High School this last year, and...
Raise the mic.
Raise the mic. Sorry. Thank you. Now, at 48, I live in Abingdon, 909 Coates Road, and run a software company that develops environmental health and safety systems for the farm industry. So I wanted to talk about, oh, I'm not coming out really in favor or against the project in any way, just a couple of concerns from what I've heard and what I've seen so far. So first off, I just want to mention something having to do with the traffic patterns. I've seen, if anyone uses Google Maps, you'll find as you go up Susquehanna trying to take a right onto Old York Road, it diverts you, takes you down Huntington and then up Guernsey, and then a right onto Old York Road. You've already got a lot of diverted traffic into a residential road, and I think it's only a matter of time for those who live on Guernsey who are going to be annoyed by it and will be in front of you in some way. So that's one thing I've noticed just out in the world. I'm concerned more about, for this AO, where you're talking about the roads in particular. Now, in this case, you're looking at a state route, Susquehanna, and you're looking at a four-lane road of Old York Road. Those are pretty substantial, able to handle reasonable traffic, reasonably wide and so forth. On the map from, I don't know if I have the control of the slide deck here, on the third one where we showed the ranges from the two hospitals in the area, looking at the road areas around them and what could possibly handle that kind of a traffic for this change in the AO, there, I'm concerned that it needs to restrict it in some way to more major roads. If you're talking about for, around Holy Redeemer, if you're talking about Huntington Pike, for instance, as being a road that can absolutely handle traffic coming in and out, just says, Abingdon Hospital does a great job. I don't see any problems going onto a road surface such as that. And yes, there are lots of other traffic issues, not to minimize at all. I hadn't thought about the Susquehanna intersection at the Noble Train Station, that's a, definitely, or Riddle Train Station, excuse me. That's definitely one to be concerned about as well. But in particular, if this proposed change goes forward, what road surfaces are going to be considered appropriate in this particular, for this kind of development? Yeah, I can't see many roads being able to handle it, and it would be appropriate to have that within the documentation. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Marilyn Shorsh. I live at 1579 Warner Road in Meadowbrook. And I myself and my husband have had numerous household projects. We've always been very careful to work with the township within the laws and zoning rules of the township. We're working on a small commercial project right now for our own building, and we've worked really amicably. The guys have been great in Abingdon Township, working with us, what's permitted, what isn't, and what we need to do to be sure that we're conforming to our community's requirements. My concern about this building is less about the building itself, the roads, the water, the Y. My concern is that an entity for construction and profit is proposing to rezone our township at all. Our township has certain zoning laws that reflect the benefit of the people who live here. I'm concerned not just this project being the prize, but the next one and the one after that. Since spot zoning really isn't permitted, let's rezone a few properties and make a whole new designation. That is a real problem because it may change the quality of life for the current residents who live near those other properties. It places a burden on township residents to watchdog for these projects, hire attorneys, come in, raise concerns, raise awareness. This isn't just one project. This is BET proposing to rezone our township. And while not everything they're proposing is so terrible, I respectfully request that our township commissioners and planners would maintain that considerable and very valuable power with the members of our community. I appreciate that because these apartments have a very high profit margin factor. This is not an act of altruism. This is an act for profit, and that's okay. I like and I understand business, and having good business centers, having various residential levels within our community are a benefit. But rezoning our township to benefit investment companies for profit, I just would really like our township to keep that power with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Don Markward, 1805 Brook Road. I had the pleasure in earlier years of chairing this commission, and it's a pleasure to see you again. Thanks.
You too. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. My, I will try to be brief. I think my neighbors have done a terrific job in picking this apart and keeping it from being a harangue and being a much more succinct and thoughtful presentation. There's a number of issues I just wanted to try to gel, and as an architect, it's a quality of life issue. The first one would really be, is there, sorry, the chance, the one would be more of a close-up of the, it's this guy. Terrific. Thank you very much. One of the concerns is one of precedent and mass. As this would be developed, you would have a tall wall along two of these streets. If the zoning changes and the precedent is created to allow this height and proximity to the streets, then eventually, that will become a norm, and we'll end up with a canyon taller than, or similar to Jenkentown. It's not necessarily bad, it's just something we have to be aware of and would be a character difference affecting 611 in total. The second one would be a, in addition to the traffic comments, mostly, or Herb raised the issue, and I think it's a very good one, of a proposed human nature tendency to turn right down Huntington Road to get onto 611 heading south. Happens now, it can only happen again. Along with that is the proposed, or the traffic for the upcoming Riddle Park has not been factored into this, I don't believe, in terms of mass. I do think, tend to agree that there may be a lessening of traffic from the constant day trips that the Y would engender, but that's a matter for discussion. The biggest concern I have is to the far right of this image. A minute ago, our architect, Mike or Mark, I apologize, noted, he was describing the images of what he called the amenity deck. He was actually describing the pool deck, which is an internal area. What we have is on the right-hand side of both the left wing and the right wing, there is an amenity deck that overlooks the, our neighborhood. And there have been no drawings showing that. If you follow the right-hand purple line down toward Huntington Road, the end of that purple, which is the tall structure, the floor level of that, the ground level would be at or above the roof of the house is right below that. The amenity deck to the right is at or above the garage to the unit to the right, but as you go down the hill, the hill slopes downward, you are now towering over our neighborhood. So you're say 30 feet, 20, 30 feet above the neighborhood on your nice deck overlooking that. I just think there's been a lack of consideration for the neighborhood, and that's the biggest thing. I don't necessarily disregard the use, certainly approaching the age or at the age, I could appreciate it, et cetera. I just don't think that there's been a substantial and effective consideration of the effect on our neighborhood. And that is all, and I again, thank you very much. I thank you for the level of quality that is being proposed here, and they're certainly, as a use, could be beneficial, just not the way it's being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Joyce Meter, and I live on 1200 Rosemont Lane, which is less than, I guess, half a mile away. And I came to the other meeting, and, you know, I really think that the neighbors have really done a great job in doing their homework. It's amazing, all the information that, so, let's give it up for these neighbors. Come on. Awesome. I feel like this should be turned around like this, because I think I want to talk to the neighbors. [laughter] to the neighbors. Maybe I watch too much Peter Falk in Columbo, but July 4th, it's bothering me. Like, why would somebody with 20 years of, 20 years of doing her job, put people out on July 4th weekend when I know, every July 4th, I know that there's going to be no traffic? If I'm planning to go to somewhere, I plan to get there in very quick time because July 4th, everybody's down the shore. They're in New Jersey, you know, or they're up at the racetrack in the Poconos or they're down at the parade, you know, the July 4th in the center city of the fireworks. So I'm just wondering why somebody would pick July 4th? And it makes me suspicious of how other studies have been done because I don't think somebody 20 years in the business of traffic would do a study on July 4th weekend to really get the accurate numbers. And I'm just wondering how many other studies of this has taken place. I guess it's the Columbo in me that is just questioning, you know, how these studies are being done and are they being done to get the numbers that they want to see? So that's just my thought on this. It's just been bothering me. I had to get up and talk, right? Yes?
Can you go to the slide that shows the trip generation? And I will address this. These were not done the same week?
We have one at a time, please.
I'm asking a question. So what you're suggesting is that they should do the entire study over during a school week, let's say next week?
And I'm going to address this and I will.
Excuse me, I'd like you to address the plan and commission one at a time. You may finish speaking, sir, and then I would like the applicant to address the question.
Because she raised a concern, and I think the question needs to be asked, of her, do you think there should be, the study redone to turn around and show properly of traffic in order to present to us?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying, why would they do it that way? Like, it puts it in my mind, like, what else is being done to get the numbers that they want?
But to turn around and say, do the same thing, that then we do the entire study and all the studies during the school week, where you have all these buses and all the traffic of everybody coming, going and away? I think that should be reasonable.
Okay, we will let the applicant address this now. Thank you.
All right. So I think the one thing that everyone here is kind of missing is that the YMCA generates more traffic than what is being proposed. That means no matter when you do your counts, your incremental increase that you think is going to happen, isn't happening. It's an incremental decrease. The counts were done the week before the 4th of July. That is actually considered acceptable by PNDAT. They are willing to accept counts that have been done within three years of when you apply for your permit. There is no rule that says you have to count when school is in session. If that was the case, that would mean every PNDAT project, every project done in for every municipality, there would be no traffic counts done at all for any development, any type of project in the summer. And again, this is going to be an incremental decrease in traffic. So even if you increase your base existing counts, we're still going to be coming to the same conclusions in terms of we're decreasing traffic, so we're going to decrease our impacts to the site.
And just let me add to this. I think there's some confusion here. So if you're saying we counted the traffic coming and going to the Y at a time when there was less traffic on the roads, that in essence means that there would be higher counts coming and going from the Y at a different time. So if you're saying there's less traffic on the road, we counted the traffics coming in and out of the YMCA. Those trips are higher than we're going to generate. If you counted them when there was more traffic on the road, there would be more trips in and out of the Y than we showed. So we counted the trips in and out of the YMCA and there's more trips in and out of the YMCA than we will generate with our project. So if you counted them at a different time where there's more traffic on the road, logic would dictate there's more trips going in and out of the YMCA, so then ours would be even less. It would be even a bigger discrepancy between the two. So if you want to talk about counting trips, we counted who goes in the Y, who goes out of the Y. If there's more traffic on the road, there would probably be more people coming in and out of the Y, so then we would be substantially less instead of incrementally less. So there's no attempt to deceive or anything. Our job is to count what's there today. Our use produces substantially less trips than what's there today. And there's just, there's no two ways about it. It's a fact based on the counts that were done.
I think the focus now is, now you're counting trips on the off-site.
Yes.
I think the community's looking at the trips on Susquehanna Road in schools in session. We have a large number of school buses, we have a large number of mom and pops driving to get to the front school, and you have students driving themselves to school. So I think what the confusion's coming in here is that people learn that the overall congestion at that intersection during the school month, which isn't represented in the study that was done at the end of the year. So I think that is part of the bar.
Right, but if you're having traffic go through that intersection, and let's look at the numbers, let's look really carefully at the numbers. So we are generating 256 less trips. So we're sending 256 less people through that intersection. So essentially, even if there's more traffic, we're producing 256 less cars going through that intersection. So there might be more traffic on the intersection during the school year, but we're taking 256 of those cars out of the road. That's what this project does. It takes 256 cars off of the road that are currently going to and from the YMCA. Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, excuse me. If we want to comment, the meeting's being taped. If you're retell advised in here, I need you to come to the mic so that it's picked up and can be refunded. Right now, the only thing that's picking up is the response from the applicant's group. Thank you.
Is there anyone who hasn't spoken tonight that would like to come up and make a comment? Please do so.
Hello, thank you for having this meeting. My name is Joe Rozak. I live at 1927 Susquehanna Road. And I agree with most of what has been said so far. It's been articulate, eloquent, well-thought-out. They didn't talk about pedestrian traffic, though. This is going to pick up pedestrian traffic. I like to talk just about one specific corner, and that's the cemetery. That sidewalk, you cannot walk to abreast. If they repaired the sidewalk, you still can't walk to abreast. You can't walk on that sidewalk with an umbrella. So what are you going to do? You're going to cross the street. Well, you can't cross the street from Abington Terrace to go to the other side to get to a safer point because you got to walk down to the cemetery. Unless you can widen that sidewalk, you've got a problem over there. That cemetery is a historical site. You can't do too much with that. You can't widen Susquehanna Road. It's going to stay the way it is on that side of the street. You've got limitations. This structure is going to cause all kinds of stress on that street. Another point, just to bring it up, I brought this up before, there is no pull-off area. Well, yes, you can pull in underneath the parking area to make your deliveries and drop off. That's not going to happen. The other day, I was stuck behind a UPS truck because instead of pulling into a huge parking lot, it pulled off on the side of the street to make a quick delivery. You've got a lot of issues over there. One of the nice things about Abington is walking. You've got some nice open spaces. This canyon effect is something I'm concerned about. When I stand next to the structure that we hope to get torn down, which is only two stories high, it's awful to have something four to five stories high on the other side. It doesn't comfort me in any way. You've got, if you can set it back more, if you can make these pull-offs, it might work a little bit better. But I don't think it would serve the purpose of what this building is to get some revenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bethany Lippa and I live at 1056 Huntington Road. And our neighborhood as a community reviewed the documents of the Abington Township comprehensive plans, the Montgomery County comprehensive plans, the Old York Road corridor documents and the zoning documents as well. And I wanted to touch upon the natural resources slash green space concerns that we had. So overwhelmingly, the goal was to preserve and protect the remaining green space and natural resources and create or reclaim additional new green spaces and natural areas for the township. And there were some areas of the BET proposal that opposed this specifically in lieu of protect proposes to eliminate one of the township's remaining open spaces that could be used for conservation and recreational purposes. It does not incorporate preservation, but rather diminishes vital green space in an area of the township that could potentially be incorporated into a town center plan. Additionally, it proposes approximately a 50% decrease in green space from approximately 40% down to 20% on that property. And from our prior conversations at earlier meetings, it decisively opposes the planners' suggestions to adopt U.S. Green Building Council lead rating systems for neighborhood developments. And finally, it proposes removal of a community service zoning, which eliminates an opportunity to meet an unmet need in the community for public recreational activities. Specifically, construction of this complex may foreclose a possibility of anyone to consider in the future installing a town center park at the specific location. Such a park would certainly enhance the beauty and attractiveness of our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joan Cass and I live on 1234 Bakius Avenue. And I have several concerns. One with the traffic. I know, I work down in Jenkentown and down near Meeting House Road and Fox Chase Road. And I have to, a lot of times, I'll purposely go out, porous, to York Road and down because coming out of Huntington, it's really, really hard in the morning to make a left-hand turn onto Susquehanna. It's quicker for me to do it that way if, but, and this is an older community, people. I know as you get older, you don't move as quickly. So trying to make a left-hand turn out of your home onto, it causes, there's more chance of a risk of accidents happening. So if they want to get out to York Road and have to go south on York Road, they'd have to make the left or take the traffic through Huntington, which is a nice community and, you know, that's not fair to the neighbors. And then, besides the, you know, more, cause more accidents, plus the, what was I going to say? The bill, when you make the left-hand turn, I know, I come originally from Haprow and they built an elderly community right in the beginning, right near the YMCA, and they put a traffic light in, which is fine. That helps the people to get out of their homes without, you know, having to worry about making a left in front of traffic. But you can't put a light there because the traffic's already backed up. Nobody would move, period, on that road during rush hour if you had another light. So you always have that risk of more accidents. And also, the YMCA building, like the first lady had mentioned, it's a historical building. And I think we could, even if they wanted to put the, the township, I mean, this building in, couldn't the architects use part of that building, keep the facade, keep the image of our town? The old buildings and, you know, remodeler, and then add on, like the back of the Y is more modern. But that front part on York Road, that's a historical building. You just want to demolish it, I mean, and turn our town into a city? I don't know. I just, I mean, I like the idea of having a community for, or living space for the elderly and it does help our taxes, I understand that. But I think there's other ways they can do it. Like, they change the image, like, why it has to be so modern? Or, Abington's not a modern town. You know, I don't know. I just like, think we should be able to keep our image.
Thank you.
My name is Patty Levinback. I'm president of Riddle East. In all of this, nothing has mentioned about Riddle East, very little about all of the traffic on the fairway. We sit at the very bottom of the hill. We have a creek that runs under our buildings. We can't handle any more water. I mean, we can't. We, these past rainstorms, snowstorms we've had, our grounds have been flooded because we've got the creek, we've got water, we've got everything and nowhere to go. I'm really very concerned about our buildings as far as water. Traffic, the fairway is becoming a nightmare. Susquehanna Road is a nightmare. I really think there needs to be a lot of effort and more insight into what our patterns are. I'm concerned, when listening to all of these people who've done their homework, this is my first meeting, but I'm very concerned about the heights that they're talking about. I mean, what's going to happen? They're at the top of the hill. If they're going to be this big and tall, what's going to happen to the ground? What's going to happen to their homes? Will there be sinks, homes sinking like we're reading about and like in Philadelphia years ago? I've only been in this township for five years. It's beautiful, it's nice, has a lot of entities, and I just think that we need to look around our community a little better than what has been done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Betty Good and I live on 1136 Jericho Road in Abington for 45 years. And the quality of Abington is a residential community. And after viewing these slides, I have just two quick comments to make. First, I do not like this tall building sitting so close to the sidewalk and street. I think it takes away from that residential look to our community. And secondly, that crossroads of Susquehanna and Old York Road is such an awful section right now that I avoid it like the plague. I will go down residential streets to avoid going through that crossroads. And that is basically the two complaints I have about this building being placed at that corner. So I hope you take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nancy Poor. I live on Mill Road in Meadowbrook, so I don't live in a section that would be directly affected by this. But when you go to buy a house, one of the things you look at is But when you go to buy a house, one of the things you look at is, how is this area zoned? Am I going to be safe in this area? The people who live near this area, these are people who relied on the zoning. They're people that have been paying their taxes all these years to Abington. And this feels to me like a betrayal if you folks do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Roy Gibson. I live at 1079 Huntington Road. Basically, I implore you to really review the documents you were handed. One of the elevation views that they give you shows the garage and the first house on Huntington Road. Well, I live the third house and across the street from that house. The entirety of the property surrounding our houses drops off 10 feet at the property line. That's the start of it. Basically, when they finish their structure, the basement of their structure will be above the second floor of my house. Okay? So please take a careful look at the documents you were handed. Because the elevation views that were shown showed the ground nice and level next to it for 40 feet or 60 feet. That is not the truth in print. If you walk the neighborhood, it is very apparent how high this building is above the houses they're putting it next to. If you look at the aerial view that shows the outline of the building, one of our neighbors basically is going to be looking up at a solid wall from their back window, literally to the top of the building. It towers right over their house. I feel bad for them. You know what I mean? But please carefully review these documents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Name's Bill Meckel. I live at 1419 Lindsay Lane. I was presented before the board back in 2007 for a variance of my own for the house. Like Mrs. Poor, I just lived behind her house. I'm not affected by all the people over here. The variance I had requested was a use variance from single-family to multiple use. And what was the multiple use? To half my, at the time, she was 90 years old, it was 85. She was 85. To build in addition, to bring my mother-in-law in. Well, I was told that to change it from single, for single-family to multiple use was unacceptable because it would, we may use it for rental property. Or, and if we use it for rental property, it would bring in higher density within the neighborhood. So the planning board at the time denied our variance. Now, they're asking for a very high density in the same location. Not 10%, 50, 60% higher, if I'm not mistaken, or even more. So if the planning board denied me a variance on my house for my mother-in-law to come move in, and at 55, I plan to live as long as my mother-in-law, she's 95 now. If you denied me that variance, you need to deny them the variance. Because you have set a precedent of denying multiple use in a single-family residential community. Now, if you lift that restriction off of me and everybody else in the township of Abington, then I'd be more than happy to turn around and approve this thing. But you've set a precedent and if you change it, then you have to make it retroactive for everybody who came forth before this board and asked for a variance of any kind. Okay? And how much money you're going to make out of this? How much traffic that's going to increase or decrease? What they also don't understand is that when you have a higher-aged community, you are going to have, odds are, they may be 60, 65. They not, they not, may not be as limber as all the others and what some of the others were saying. As they, as they drive their vehicles up and out of the facility, they're going to make that left turn where the hill is coming up. Have you ever sat at the, sat at the and watched these cars hauling up the hill? Trying to make it up the hill? Or even at a snow period, these last, these last months? Nobody can make it up the hill. So how do you expect the people to come out, make that right or make that left at a dead stop? They're not going to make it. Unless they've come up with a new way of driving vehicles. I mean, I had to force my mother-in-law to stop driving. She drove a Pontiac. There's a little, five-feet-tall little lady driving this huge Pontiac because she couldn't drive it anymore. So here you've got older people in a, in a community in a situation where the, the greater, the greater the street is at such a level that you will have greater accidents.
I think we have your point, sir.
What's that?
I think we have your point and we're just trying to wrap up here.
Okay.
Thank you. Can we, is there anyone who has not had an opportunity to speak tonight? Who would like to speak?
But why would you, why would you shut me down when you didn't shut anybody else down?
I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
Thank you.
If I could just ask one question. Has there, has there been a, an evaluation of the Y? Whether, you know, it's like, it seems like everything has to always be knocked down and new construction being put up. Like, has there been any evaluation of the building? Both the funeral home building and the YMCA as to, you know, if it's still in, in working order? Because let me tell you, I put up with over a year of the construction right in my backyard with the excavation of the fields. And it stunk. I never knew that when you excavate it, you know, dirt, it stunk. The mice were all around and they started, they said they were going to start at 7 o'clock. They were out there at 6:30 in the morning. And it got earlier and earlier all the time. And clang, 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 and all that heavy work equipment and things like that. So you haven't even discussed that, like, the whole thing of doing construction for, what I understand, a year and a half of every day being out there, clang, 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 and all that dirt being moved around and things like that. Has anybody done any studies of the YMCA and seen whether it's, and then, you know, offer it as office space or some other type of thing? That's what I'm wondering.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Heidi Germain. I live at 1092 Huntington Road. I wanted to at least be able to take a moment to say that I support the letter that our neighborhood put together. They worked very hard on it and I appreciate so much what they did. I'm an oncology nurse at Jefferson, Jefferson, Abington. I'm, will be 59 years old in May. I am not a senior citizen yet. So I think that there was a lot of information given trying to build up this building for seniors. I absolutely promote that. I was unaware that the age of 55 and up are the senior living. That seems to be the new trend. Our 88-year-old mother-in-law lives across the street at Sunrise and so I'm familiar with that. If everyone can just follow that S down the arrow, about one inch of that blue line is my backyard. My husband and I live on the corner of Huntington Road and Susquehanna. And it's beautiful. So we moved from downtown in Philadelphia and Abington is a charming community. The Quakers came out years ago and used this community as their vacation home. They built these beautiful historic stone fences that run up and down Old York Road. You can see them all around. That's one of the charms of Abington. Obviously, this building will take all of the Old York fence away. At any rate, I am against this building. It pretty much takes my house right off the map.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for coming out and for your service to the community. I'm Christopher Germain, Heidi Germain's husband, from 1092 Huntington Road. I also want to thank my neighbors for the incredible job they've done of researching and weighing in on the community here. As I hear my neighbors comment, I hear people who've lived here for 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, 40 years. There's probably people here who've lived in the community for a longer period of time. And I think, if I can speak for them, they come to Abington because it's a wonderful community. It's a great place to live. And that's part of your job, with all due respect, is to make sure that we continue to have such a community. The problem I have with the proposal is that it goes so far against what the board has already dictated, what the community needs and what the community deserves. The height of the building is, I don't know, 40, 50% above what's allowed under the current zoning. The density is, what, three times what's currently allowed? It really doesn't pass the sniff test, in my opinion. The other thing is that this community is, it's a historical nature. This is probably the single most important intersection in Abington at the corner of 611 and Susquehanna. We've got the beautiful cemetery, very historic. We've got wonderful Abington Presbyterian Church. And what's being proposed towering above the rest is Abington Terrace. And my question is to you, and I think my neighbors have already answered it, this is not the type of development that we, we want or need in our community at this time. At least not under the current proposal and the restrictions which have been given us. So I would encourage you to reject the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rune Hellersley. I live in 1047 Huntington Road. I have not spoken yet tonight. I would just implore you, since you are an advisory board, appointed by the board commissioners, who are supposed to represent the people. And it's very clear to me, it's been for a long time, that we as Abington community do not want BET in our neighborhood, in our backyards. So I implore you to listen to the people you are supposed to represent.
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. And wow, everybody did their homework. This was wonderful to hear all the different points that everybody made and I am in agreement with all of them. I wanted just to say a couple of things. So one thing was the water that's been talked about, whether it's going downhill or whether it's going to York Road. Well, it wouldn't matter because if it's going downhill, it's going to affect Riddle Park and those people down there. And if it's going to the Tucuny, I think all of you on the Planning Commission, at least, if not the rest of the community, understands that the Tucuny goes down towards Chalkenham and that is fraught with major, major problems. And there is only more development coming and that is going to be problematic. So it's not like, oh, it's going to the Tucuny, so it'll be fine. Both ways is a problem. I also didn't hear anything about fire trucks and where they would turn around. And when we have a compact dense unit like this, I know, I just sent the commissioners, you know, the recent one in Trump Tower that, you know, we had one in New York, we had one in Westchester. Obviously, they all had some problems, you know, with their systems. But nonetheless, problems or no, we have had those problems in Abington, even on the watch of Mr. Markman when he was commissioner. So it's important that we consider, where are the fire trucks going? There's been almost no talk about how they would turn around and where multiple fire trucks would go down this tiny little lane that they've created. So I think that's important. The other thing that I wanted to mention is, one of the residents from right behind there, Mrs. Lippa, mentioned about it being a park. It occurs to me that if this is the heart of our town, why are we putting a giant structure for, really, for 225 families in the heart of our town? Shouldn't the heart of our town be for the people of the township? And the park idea was absolutely fabulous. The concern for me is that even though it wasn't anywhere near what there were rights for on this property, this proposal came about. And as Mrs. Schor said, it required attorneys and research and endless meetings for the residents that were challenged. But it also did something else that was very negative. And that is, I heard a rumor, I don't know what the figure is, but I heard a rumor that there was maybe $3 million for one parcel, $4 million for another. But we do know that whatever the amount was, and maybe Mr. Markman will tell us tonight, but I doubt it, but if he did, that would be nice. That amount of money to build a structure that big, for that property, is going to skew the possible sale for any other purpose, especially for the possibility of a township buying it for a park. So to the Planning Commission, if they could send a message to the commissioners that when something's so out of whack, it shouldn't even be considered, I think that would be ideal. Because in this particular case, some damage may be done to what other possibilities might be there. Thank you for turning this down.
Thank you very much. Okay, with the conclusion of the public offering their comments, I would now like to open it up to the Planning Commission. I think we've heard approximately 23 people from the community voice their support and concerns. And we've had a lot of information to think about and I know this is not the first meeting for any of us. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the Planning Commission and hear what your questions or comments would be.
Excuse me. I've been very much informed and educated by the comments that we've heard tonight. And I assume that Mr. Markman and BET has heard carefully what remarks has been offered by the community. I don't know unless we are having some fresh new sources of evidence that any further comment on our part is going to really assist either the community or Mr. Markman. I think the community has done a fabulous job raising their objections and I, well, I'm not suggesting we adjourn the meeting. I think the real benefit of this gathering has been the opportunity for the community to stress the objections and considerations that have guided their opinions. And I think Mr. Markman and BET has to consider carefully all of the objections that have made. So with that in mind, anyone else who wishes to make any comments, that's up to their own discretion.
I was just going to say I appreciate the community coming out tonight. And the letter that was submitted, I mean, a lot of my concerns are your concerns. I'm especially interested in the adaptive reuse of the existing historic YMCA building part that's on. part that's on Old York Road. But just to give a little bit of feedback, I think the density is not in compliance with our intent in our comprehensive plans. So, that's just my, as a member, comments.
First of all, thank you, everybody. The comments were great. Don't feel that you needed this forum tonight to say a lot of these things. A lot of the issues about traffic on Susquehanna and Old York Road are not new. I know there's a lot of commissioners here tonight. My commissioner sends out a weekly, or monthly blast. I respond to him all the time. Let your commissioners know when you have ideas for things. Does anybody even know that the township's looking at grants for improving Susquehanna and Old York Road? That's being done outside of this. It has nothing to do with these guys. It's something that needs to be done. They've laid out some traffic things. I tend to agree after hearing the explanation, and thank you for the clarification on that. That, you know, the July thing, it really doesn't matter. You could take the counts tomorrow, you'll have higher traffic. I do believe that it will be less. These are all things that I think if this project moves forward in some form, we're going to see more information on it. It might be who the applicant, if they move forward to develop a VSIM model or something that shows the traffic impacts, because a lot of what we're hearing is opposition because it's misinformation. There's a lot of tools out there today that can show these things. I'm an engineer, so I know these things, and I'm just trying to throw out examples. The other element of that is, which would be crucial because of the size and the scope as presented, is a Revit model. All architects, all structural engineers use Revit. It's an amazing 3D tool. I made this comment at the high school presentation back in October, when was it? You know, the high school came in with their plans, and we didn't have any sections, we didn't have any visuals, we had no idea what they were trying to do. And then I realized they were going to bid, and it's like, where's your model? All of the architects use models. Use a model because that can help dispel the concerns, if there aren't concerns, or it could work the other way. But do that work. You're doing that work as part of your design anyway. Bring it to the people to show them that. You're doing it as part of your design anyway. I think the last thing, I guess, you know, the stormwater stuff, I don't have a big concern about the stormwater. Again, as an engineer, I know that any development that goes forward has to meet current standards. The problems that have been stated about stormwater, you know, flooding in the creeks, you're absolutely correct, but that's not because of this project that's existing. That's because of, you know, tens and hundreds of years of development over the years that went unabated. You can't do that anymore. No development can do that. It has to be equal or less impact than what's out there when they do the development, or it won't get approved, period. That has nothing to do with us making a recommendation with the commissioners. That's an engineering thing. It's statute. So, all of those things, I think, will take care of themselves. The biggest thing, I think, and I made this comment, what was the one down by Lee's Hoagie House last year, where we had a developer come in with a zoning amendment, proposed zoning amendment? And it was, you know, we didn't vote on it. It was presented as an informational thing, and our comment to them was, this is kind of at a scope. We agreed something down on Old York Road by Lee's Hoagie House would be great, but we just went through all kinds of meetings to redo this 2017 zoning ordinance, and they threw it all out. They didn't take into account very much of that. And that was, I mean, I made that comment, several others did too. Just look harder at what you've got in front of you. See if there's something you can come up with. I'm going to make the same comment to this development. This development, I think, would be great in some form. In the form as shown in these pictures, I don't like it. I do think there is something, though, and hopefully something that could be crafted more towards the zoning that was done. You know, Mr. Markman, you were commissioner when that was being developed. You're aware of what was, what went on, and that would be, I guess, my statement that I would want to leave things with is-
Can I just ask a question? I guess, would, so that's what we did consider, and Penn State recently got their rezoning to do their dormitories. Is that a more desirable use on this site, just to apply the Penn State student housing zoning to this site? I mean, it's, you know, it's a similar density, less in a lot of ways, actually, than the Penn State dorms. So, and the difference is, it is iratable, it does pay taxes. And I'm not saying that this density, we're not married to this density, but our starting point was, in fact, a recently adopted text amendment to the zoning ordinance. So, that really was the starting point here. So, I guess the question is, I mean, is that a desirable use at that location? I didn't think it was. I thought that if we came in with the Penn State zoning, you know, it wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't be something that would be right for the township, although the people at Penn State asked me to do student housing here.
Are you waiting for an answer, Mr. Markman?
Yeah, I mean, you know, that's where we started.
No, I'm not going to, I'm not going to make that, I'm not going to answer that question.
I mean, if it's your opinion, that's all. I'm asking, is that a more desirable use here?
No. I'm pretty sure was, Penn State's was a lot lower.
It's not. It's not, actually.
I'll go back and check.
We have, we actually have a chart, and I'll send it to you, so.
Okay, I'd like to look to the planning commission members to my left for comments.
I just want to reiterate what you said. I really appreciate hearing all of your opinions. I think this is a big impactful project, and I love to hear everyone's opinion, and hopefully, you know, we'll get a resolution out of this. Thank you.
I emphasize that, thanking the community for coming out and speaking today and voicing their opinions and concerns. With regards to the project, I agree with quite a bit of what Dale had indicated with drainage concerns. I don't think that's something that the community should be concerned about in the sense that what's coming off this site is going to be less or equal to what's getting off there today. So, I don't think we're going to see any additional drainage issues associated with that. I do think that some of the neighbors nearby do have some concerns regarding buffering or something along that nature between this building, because it is such a large, a large structure coming onto this site. And I don't know if it necessarily ties into the aesthetics of the community, but I do think that there is potential for something to happen at this site, maybe just not with this current plan or layout, but maybe something downsized a little bit from there.
I'd just like to say thank you to everybody for coming out. This is not an easy process. Change is difficult. I don't think anybody's happy that the YMCA is moving. But something will be done on this site, and I think all of your comments are sincere and have validity, and I think we all have heard loud and clear some of the objections. With that said, again, something probably will be moving forward. I think we all realize that. There were some positives with this project, and we are a community, everybody here, we all live here. You know, over the last 20 or 30 years, Abington has become more dense. You know, if we all had a crystal ball and we could look forward 20 or 30 more years in the future, I'm not sure what it's going to look like. I think we're all concerned. I think we're trying to do our best. It's not easy for any of you to get up in front of a microphone and speak your feelings or even speak for the project. But I do value everybody's input, and hopefully we can move forward and get the best use for this project moving forward. So, thank you all.
All right, thank you, everyone. I want to say that, I want to wrap it up now. I would like to say I never failed to be impressed by the members of this community-
If you change the name of this project to Schwartzman Terrace, I think you might have something to talk about.
One quick comment, please.
I would like to say that he has a wonderful point. It's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. If anybody's watching, Mr. Toll, Mr. Schwartzman, anybody that wants to buy this and use this as park, open space, naming rights, I'm in favor of that. So, and I'm very sincere. If you love Abington, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to donate. Do it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Markman, did you want to say something before I wrap it up?
So, I appreciate your comments. What I think we'll probably do is we'll take the comments of the citizens and your comments, and, you know, we'll try to come back with something. So, what I told the commissioners and what I, you know, I'll put a new plan together, and we did have a neighborhood meeting. I mean, it almost seems like this is probably the better forum to have the next meeting, combine the neighborhood meeting and the planning commission meeting. So, we'll go modify our plan and come back with something that addresses as many of the concerns that have been brought up, and, you know, we appreciate the opportunity to come in front of you, so thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you.
Mr. Markman, may I just suggest that the next time you come back, will you please make certain that we have a perspective from the residences on Huntington?
Sure.
From top to bottom?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you again, everybody, for coming. As I said, I never fail to be impressed by the time that you all dedicate to these meetings. We appreciate all your comments. We have a lot to think about, a lot of challenges and opportunities with this particular proposal, and I think we have a lot of good information for the commissioners to revisit this again. So, thank you again, have a good evening.